Good evening, like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for being here. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on March 24, 2021, with the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. Excuse me, this notice is posted at the Office of the District on March 19, 2021, at 1:00 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 5510415510, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum, present we have Mr. Dave Water, absent we have Dr. Lallan, myself, Mr. Friedman, absent Mr. Starkey and present Mr. Donahue. Dr. Lallan and Adam Starkey both, Jason Starkey said that they will not be able to attend. So we do have a quorum, but may please have everyone stand for the Fledge of Allegiance and the vacation.
Let's make it just as part of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings that you bestow upon us and for bringing us together once again to conduct this meeting. Lord, we ask that you continue to guide us as we go through the agenda so that we can make the best possible decisions for the benefit of our customers. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Robert. Let's proceed with item three, invitation to the audience for public comment. Includes staff, board. Anyone like to share anything, discuss anything?
I'd just like to mention that today we issued the notices of water use restrictions. Those went out by email, they went out on social media. They also went out to our partners in the local municipalities. They also went out to the chambers of commerce. So the message has been getting out about conservation due to the stage two of our water drought management plan.
Very good. Does anyone else want to share anything or discuss anything? Okay, thank you. Let's move along to item four, consider and discuss for possible approval of the minutes for the workshop of meeting for March 3, 2021.
Motion approved.
Motion for approval by Mr. Donahue and second by Mr. Water. All those in favor and unopposed, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to item five, consider and discuss for possible approval of the minutes for the regular meeting from March 10, 2021. Motion made by Mr. Water, second by Mr. Donahue, or all those are in favor and unopposed, motion carries, thank you. Item six, presentation by Leana, Lily, Leana Cano. Is she going to be on Zoom?
Yes.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening. How are you all doing today?
Well, thank you, welcome.
So my name is Leana Cano. I'm the Mobility Executive for the Lower RGV. I just want to make sure, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, thank you for inviting us to join the meeting today. On the call, I have Tom Randall, who is our Senior Public Safety Advisor for the First Responder Network Authority, David Champion, who is our FirstNet Mobility Executive for South Texas, and Cosma Science, my Regional Manager. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Let me know when you guys are able to see the presentation.
Okay, we can see it.
Perfect. So I had several meetings with Eddie Orlando and Enrique, but I wanted to give a brief overview of what FirstNet is to all the board members and then spend some time on the Q and A. When we think of what is FirstNet? FirstNet is the only nationwide public safety network services and solutions that are dedicated to our first responders and those who support them. It's also known as BAN-14, which gives you an elevated network status during disasters such as the freeze of 2021. With an end-to-end encryption, it has improved communication through interoperability. One thing I'd like to point out specifically on this slide is that there is no network throttling. It's in the FirstNet contract that they can be held accountable if this occurs in our network. When we think of what launched FirstNet? We think of 9/11. During 9/11, communication concerns and congestion of the network really prevented public safety personnel from saving lives. Our request for an interoperable network was brought to our attention and those who support them recommended it being built by them and with them. So that is what BAN-14 is. It's a first responder network that is built by first responders and with them, which leads me to another partnership. FirstNet is the partnership between the FirstNet Authority and AT&amp;T. Get this out of the way here. Sorry about that. Wanted to make sure you saw the partnership. So what AT&amp;T brought to the table was its $180 billion infrastructure, technology innovation, secured network and telecom expertise. When we talk about what FirstNet coverage looks like in Texas, FirstNet requested a map that provided what our consumer network looked like, which is on the left in green. FirstNet said they needed to fill the gap in coverage. On the right in blue, we can see our FirstNet coverage throughout the state of Texas, which definitely filled those gaps. I also like to share the press release that Governor Abbott communicated in 2017. This is the official announcement of Texas to opt into FirstNet. It's something I like to share during my presentation because the priority and preemption that FirstNet gives our first responders can save lives. One of the most important details on this press release is actually the date. So September 19, 2017, right after Hurricane Harvey, Governor Abbott realized what an asset FirstNet was to the state of Texas. And you're probably asking yourself, why FirstNet? So BAN-14, which is our FirstNet network, was designed to be reliable, interoperable and innovative. Other partners that consist of the FirstNet are Motorola Solutions, which was able to bridge the communication gap between LAN, mobile radio and LTE with our Push-to-Talk solutions, General Dynamics, which allows the integration and program management such as our deployables, cybersecurity, Safe Being Consulting, which delivers the app ecosystem advanced web portal to enable and strengthen enjoyment of your devices, and Emsat Government, which brings a wide range of satellite communications to FirstNet. There are several users that are allowed on FirstNet. Where Laguna Madre Water District fits in is in our extended primary users. When we think of an accident, who's first on the scene? We have our fire, EMS, police and emergency management. Those who support them, such as Laguna Madre Water Districts, fall under extended primary users. As I move on to the next slide, I definitely want to elaborate a little bit more about the support and advantages that you get when you sign on with FirstNet. FirstNet comes with a dedicated 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year mobility customer care that is based in the US, which is definitely huge. We also have over 72 deployables that are ready upon request. Now, one thing Governor Abbott did when he opted in to the FirstNet was request that five deployables always stay in the state of Texas. Texas is very large and no other state has this in their contract. Now, an example of what our deployables look like are on this slide. We have our Colt, which is literally a cell site on wheels. And another option we have is our drone that is used during hurricanes. One example is they were able to use it to get a fiber line across a large body of water to get connection to one side of the city to another. Now, I know I kind of just sped through that really quick, but I really wanted to give ample time for Q and A and let Tom and David take over the presentation and see what concerns Laguna Madre has and how FirstNet can be a best solution for them. So I definitely want to let the board answer, ask any questions at this time. I'm going to stop you right there. I am so sorry. I can't really understand you. You sound a little muffled.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Perfect, yes sir.
I'd just like to explain to the board why we are looking into another communication network that because our communication failed during the freeze and the board was concerned about it, so we're looking into the FirstNet communications because of that reason that our cell phones were down and all our internet services were down, so we couldn't communicate back to the board members from the first day to possibly the second day of the freeze. So it was a big concern to us that we are looking into this because of that. And that's why we're looking at FirstNet.
Yes, this, this, this FirstNet would be, we evaluated the commercial carriers and we evaluated FirstNet as well. After going over that evaluation process, staff is recommending FirstNet to be our carrier in place of the current contract, which we have with T-Mobile. So this would be our cellphone provider for the district. So that is going to be a staff's recommendation. That's going to be your next agenda item is approval of a contract with FirstNet.
So, Eddie, we're going from $742 a year to $2443, or is that one time?
Month.
A month, we're tripling the cost, okay. And we're tied in to them for two years, 44 months, correct?
David, do you want to go over? Yeah, perfect.
This contract, this proposal also includes the backup cellular internet connections for, for our admin building, for the water plant as well. So this would, these cradle point devices are, will be providing a backup cellular solution for internet outages at the water plant and at the administrative building. That solution alone would have been a great asset to us. We didn't have internet access, we had very limited communication. So all this is arising out of the recommendations that we presented at the last report, at the last meeting where we gave you recommendations as far as ways to move forward to make sure that we're not in the same position that we were entering this disaster.
So, but we cannot eliminate the existing internet and phone system we have. This is an addition too.
Correct. This is, this is providing a backup. So like those cradle point solutions is providing a backup which we did not have previously.
This is on item four, one aspect to start off, correct?
Correct.
And, and what other municipal or, I'm sorry, well, I guess, well, also, other governments and municipalities are using this in our area.
I don't know. They, yes, yes. I can, Eddie, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. And thank you, board, for the opportunity to visit with you. My name is David Champion. I am based here in Westlaco. I am the FirstNet representative on the AT&amp;T side. Also on the phone, though, is Tom Randall, who is actually with the Government Authority. This is a government program. This is a government entity that's housed in the Commerce Department. This network is a public safety grade network. This is a private broadband network. And what I mean by that, this is a cellular network exclusively reserved for agencies that provide public safety response. In, within that umbrella are utilities, because that's considered critical infrastructure. So to answer the question, what other agencies in this area? Pretty much all major county law enforcement, all major city law enforcement, state DPS is all on FirstNet. What you have here is a segregated, non-commercial broadband network. So this is public safety grade. It was stood up to expressly, you know, back up public safety response and of course, critical infrastructure such as what you deliver on a daily basis to your constituency. So that's what this network is. So you're not riding on a commercial network as you were with your, or are with your current provider. This is a totally independent, this is another major carrier only reserved for public safety. So with that comes a tremendous responsibility on our part. AT&amp;T is a government contractor building the network for the FirstNet Responder Authority. And we maintain and we operate it. It's a 25-year commitment to build this network and maintain it. So there's a huge responsibility that comes with ensuring that the network is stood up, operating and to its fullest potential. And that includes during crisis events. Nobody thought that we would be without power like we were and go through the things that we did. But we pushed through it and, and for down here, hurricanes are a big issue, so we're preparing ourselves for that as well.
Can you kind of elaborate on that? What, what your preparation for hurricanes are? And when the infrastructure completely goes down or out, if it's, if it's, I hope never happens, a catastrophic hurricane, what, and the infrastructure is, is decimated. What, what, explain the process then, what, what our communication and backup options are, please.
And so, and thank you for that question. So our, our responsibility and part of our, part of the tools in our tool chest are exactly what Leana showed in her presentation is we have a fleet of vehicles that can be deployed and stood up and you have cell site on wheels that can be brought into a disaster area. A very good case in point, just recently with the hurricane season in Louisiana, we actually still have some vehicles on the ground there providing cell coverage because towers were literally taken down. Mother Nature can be very ruthless, as we know. We just lived through a very strange event in February. Hurricanes can be very devastating. So our arsenal of vehicles to be brought in can provide cellular coverage. Is it going to be the white area that we're all used to? No. But it can provide some sort of relief and some sort of benefit as opposed to zero. So we have vehicles that we can put on the road. We have, we actually even have in our arsenal a blimp, believe it or not, kind of. And we live here in the valley, so we see these aerostats up in the air that are providing surveillance for CBP. Well, FirstNet has something like that, but it's providing cellular coverage. And that was deployed in Louisiana as well. So these tools are available free of charge to you as a subscriber on FirstNet. And so that's, that's our approach is we prepare for the storm. We monitor the storm, we stage assets. We don't stage them in the market. We stage them right outside the market so that we can roll in once roads are clear and conditions allow for equipment and personnel to move in. So, and that for us in the valley, staging is generally right outside of the, you know, that could be Alice, could be Corpus, could be San Antonio. But things can be here relatively very quickly. So, go ahead.
One other question I have. How many staff members' phones do you have? You have 25 staff member phones? 30, 30 staff member phones, so are all of those, will all of those staff members be connected and active?
That's correct. Looking forward to that. If you all remember, we used to carry 2013, I respect that, more records. We had AT&amp;T and then we downgraded to T-Mobile because of the cost. But even what I see now at this price of FirstNet, it's pretty reasonable, 34. So I believe, yeah, all the managers are going to have one because they're on duty.
Is there any other utility like this?
In this area?
In the valley areas. Do you have any other utilities?
Yes, Delta Lake, I believe, is, Delta Lake Irrigation District is already aboard. The Harlingen Water District is, has considered it and is, and will adopt. At least that's what they told us, will adopt in October once their fiscal year rolls in. There are others upstate. I don't have that list directly in front of me, but there are several utilities upstate, both electrical and water that are, you know, FirstNet subscribers.
Get a copy of the list. I guess I'm a little fuzzy here. I'm taking Jason's spot as a football player. So, so, yeah, so we're talking, we're replacing all of T-Mobile. That's gone. And this is not only the emergency system, it's also our everyday system.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
But it tripled the price.
Well, yeah, 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 but, but, but it's the assurance.
It's a guaranteed insurance that you're going to always have, provided service.
Yeah.
And a synopsis. No, it's monthly.
I know, but it says monthly total 1530. Okay, no. It's, it's, the increase is going from 742 to 1530.
Yeah, the one-time cost for the cradle, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Cost for AT&amp;T and then Verizon, it's a lot higher than.
And all this performed during the freeze, yeah. How effective was it during the freeze?
Well, so, yeah, so I'll let, I'll let, I'd like for Tom Randall to join us in the conversation since he does represent FirstNet Authority, the government agency, whose sole ownership of this network is theirs and their governance over it. And he's been gathering data from meetings across the state with stakeholders such as yourselves. You know, these are people that are end-users and have, we all lived through the freeze. So I'll turn it over to Tom right quick just to, to kind of give a brief synopsis of the experience and what, what transpired on the ground. Tom, are you there?
Yes, David, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Great, great. You guys scared me there for a little bit when you said it was triple the cost. I would like to, I almost fell out of my chair. We normally don't hear that. So I'm hoping that you resolve that issue as far as what the breakdown of the costs are. And I appreciate David giving me the hard question. I just wanted to first introduce myself. I'm Thomas Randall. I'm the Senior Public Safety Advisor for the First Responder Network Authority. We are an agency that was created by Congress in 2012 and we're housed under the United States Department of Commerce. So we are a federal agency and like David said, we've got a 25-year contract with AT&amp;T to build out this network that, that we from the federal perspective invested $6.5 billion in as far as the buildout of the initial five-year phase of the buildout. I'm based here in Texas. I live in Caldwell, Texas, just outside of Bryan College Station. Retired Lieutenant from Brazos County Sheriff's Office. I had 37 years with them and I worked for Texas DPS for a couple of years on the state plan opt-in to where we reviewed the terms of the contract for the state of Texas and what the state of Texas was going to get out of this project from FirstNet. And then now what I try to do is, is make sure that you all, our stakeholders, are receiving the the benefit and the solution that we agreed on in the contract. Like David was saying, we did see an unprecedented level of issues that came, especially in the power outages where Texas normally would see a regional outage such as it during a hurricane where we had something would hit Corpus Christi or the RTV or what we had in Harvey where it was regional, but it was a large region. We still had enough assets to be able to take care of that. What we saw in the, in the winter storm, Yuri, was that we had a statewide issue. We had ERCOT that failed and went and caused us power outages statewide. We did see some network problems across the state but because of the extended period of time of the outage, we did see some areas that had some issues because of generator failures, whether it was a belt that broke because of the cold temperatures or, or what we never really see in Texas is that is diesel fuel gelling because of the temperatures. We, we learned not only from FirstNet, but also from the Texas Department of Public Safety and some of the other folks that use diesel in their generators. We don't treat for winter fuel here. And when we were, when FEMA was sending us additional diesel deliveries, it was gelling up as it got in-state because it was so cold here. So we learned some things about what did go wrong with the network. Did it work perfectly? Not as what we expected, but one of the things that we rely on and was part of the state contract is when, when the, the network does fail and things are going to fail, it's mechanical, electrical, it's going to fail. How do we recover from that? And that's why what they were talking about on these deployables, that's why the deployable program was so important to the state of Texas when they opted in, that they said, you know what, we want at least the five that are stationed here so that if we do have a catastrophic failure, that we are able to recover from that relatively quickly. If we have a, like what happened up in Randall County where the tornado struck and knocked down one of our FirstNet towers. They began, they began rebuilding that tower almost immediately and got us up and running from, from that catastrophic failure. That's, that's the purpose of this deployable fleet and it has been so important to us that as part of our reinvestments to the network, because we, we've still got 22 years left on this contract. We're three years into a 25-year contract. We're, from the federal perspective, we're going to invest another $18 billion over the next 22 years. One of the things that we invested in this, this past year was is to expand that deployable fleet. Because we saw it's just not disasters and floods and hurricanes that, that knock out our systems. It's fiber cuts that knock out our systems. And when we have one of these, we want to be able to quickly stand that back up until that repair is made. And that's where that deployable fleet comes in on, is so valuable to us. And also the availability that AT&amp;T as a contract partner brought to us by allowing us access to their Response Operations Group assets, which would be generators and, and power units to be able to, to bring power back up when we have such a failure like what we, what we saw in Texas. So that, that's one of the things that we're really looking at from a federal side is where did things go right within this winter storm? Where did things go wrong? How can we improve and where do we need to move some investment to make sure that if we experience something like this again, that, that not only will be, will we be as prepared as we were, but we will be even better prepared if it was to happen to us again. And like David was saying, you know, we're going to have hurricanes. We're always going to have hurricanes hit Texas. And we want to make sure that, that our stakeholders are more prepared, better prepared than any other network that's available to them.
What I heard is that they had some issues in certain areas, in certain areas were okay. That's why.
Tom, would you, so my understanding was that you had one out of seven towers in our area go down and that it was down for approximately 24 hours and then it came back up? Does that, does that sound right?
And David, I don't know if you've got the specific numbers that went down there.
Okay. Yeah, so, so that's, that's, I think that was Eddie that asked that question, correct? So yes, that's correct. We, you have seven, seven cell sites that cover within your service area. And one of those sites did have some impact issues due to power. And so it had to recover. It had some battery backup. It was on battery backup power and the batteries were dealing with cold, quite frankly. Batteries don't do well with cold, as we discovered. So we had to get those batteries replaced and the site was back up in less than 24 hours. But when you consider how cell networks are designed and engineered, they're designed with overlap. What I mean by that is a case in point, you can drive from McAllen to Laguna Madre or to Port Isabel and generally hold a call all the way through because the cell sites are overlapping each other and the call is handing off as you move from cell site to cell site. So even though there was one site that got impacted, you still had six other sites that were supporting that area. And so, and that's, that's by design and that's, that's an engineering design in terms of how cell coverage is implemented and how it's broadcast and how it supports the end user in the field. So even though one site was impacted with some, some power issues and we resolved it, you actually still had, you had, you had communication available to you. uh, and we resolved it, uh, you actually still had, you had, you had communication available to you. And I had, and the reason I know that is because part of my job, uh, is, um, I interface with all the, with all public safety. Uh, and I, I actually work emergency management for Hidalgo County as well, uh, as a reserve officer. So, uh, I'm, I'm in tune with the emergency management personnel in all counties that I cover, which is pretty much all of South Texas. Uh, and so I was in communication with, with, um, now, Tom, Tom Hushen, who's the Emergency Management Coordinator for Cameron County. And he and I stayed closely connected and, and, uh, he, he was informing me of where some of the trouble spots were and I was able to use some of our intel tools to see what we were dealing with and, and I was feeding information back to him, which is the same thing that would be applied to you, um, as a subscriber. If you're having issues, I need to hear from you. Uh, and then I do the backend work to try and see how we get these things resolved. So you have a team that gets engaged.
Let me ask you, I don't wanna interrupt, I'm sorry, but the, the Cameron County, uh, Correspondence Building, whatever they built in Los Fresnos, the Emergency, uh, Correspondence Communications Headquarters that they built in, in Cameron County. That, is that correct? The, the one in Los Fresnos? Like where there's a hurricane where, where everyone goes to, they just.
Those are the safe domes?
The safety management safe center.
Yes.
Yes, yes. So what would you do? You deploy a, a cell, a cell truck there or something and that kind of gets everyone connected and up and running basically?
Right, so our first, our first responsibility is to the users of FirstNet. Okay, so that's public safety. That would be you as well. Should you, should the board decide to move in that direction and become a subscriber to FirstNet? So the, the vehicles that roll, the equipment that gets deployed is going to be providing service to FirstNet users. Uh, now, if, if the question is more about constituency at large, i.e. general public, that's not really the FirstNet, that's not the charge of the FirstNet program. FirstNet is targeting FirstNet public safety.
Oh, if a hurricane comes down here and, and obviously that's, that's gonna be the next, the next big thing that happens. So you're gonna deploy, you're gonna, you're gonna deploy something down here to keep us up and running.
That's correct.
In our communications. Even on, even if we're the only customer on your network in this zone or area.
That's exactly right. That's exactly what we do. And I've had, I've had trucks roll out in the middle of nowhere because there's half a dozen users out there fighting a wild landfire. You know, because they need cellular coverage to be able to push data, video, whatever they need to do to communicate. Uh, that's what, that's what the purpose of the program is. Now, on the commercial, what we call constituent side, the commercial, the, you know, general public, well, AT&T has its own assets. Departed and apart, right?
Yeah, we're talking, we're talking a twenty thousand dollar difference in two years over what, is that right? So you guys are just looking like seventeen, eight oh five. Well, seventeen, eight oh five, and then thirty-seven, two. Yeah, so I, I just went off of what T-Mobile said. You know, just multiply it down. But so we're talking about twenty thousand dollar difference, give or take. And, and you guys, you guys are recommending that's correct?
I like, I like to be the client.
Yeah, I feel more comfortable.
Just give the time to get a client list.
And a full board.
Full board, yeah. A full board.
Table. So, uh, Leana, you, you guys think that you can get us a, um, a customer, uh, contact list so that we can check references? Um, that's what the board is, is, uh, is asking for.
David, is that something we can give them? Or Tom?
Reference. Yes, yeah, I, I'll, I'll, that'll, that'll be my homework. I'll get that to you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We have to call the Iron Post. So we're gonna move along to, we'll close this out. Uh, we'll, we'll review it at the next meeting when the full board is present. I think that's kind of the direction that the, the board members wanna go to, uh, and we'll, we'll revisit this at the next meeting. Let's move along to item seven. What's that?
You're gonna table item seven?
Yes. Let's move on to consider and discuss the possible approval of FirstNet, uh, contract. Motion for table by Mr. Water. Second by Mr. Donahue. All those in favor, they are. None opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we're, we're, we're close, but we'll leave it there. Let's carry along. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much. If you have any questions, uh, Eddie, you guys have my number and David will work on that information to get you guys and don't hesitate to give us a call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Likewise, thank you. Item A, General Manager's Report.
Chairman, members of board, I just wanted to bring this, uh, COVID nineteen data for February. The report, uh, says that, uh, we had one positive employee, two negative employees that got tested for, of, of, all testing was three poison. So it's going down. Uh, it's gone from zero, but then all of a sudden the last week of it, it happened that, uh, they, somebody traveled a lot of pounds or they had to get, uh, tested.
And tested positive?
Uh, one, one positive for whatever reason was, but the other two, when they traveled, they had to get tested and they were negative. That's what happens. You know, sometimes they just travel a lot of town out of the area and we, uh, make sure that we get tested. So anyhow, that's, uh, dropping down. We have received some vaccines already for a lot of employees. We kinda, uh, mentioned to the city of Port Isabel, will help us out and assisting in getting the first responders. We're a part of that. And, uh, they've never considered us as first responders, but if we are at one point or another, so we kind of recommend it and they help us out. Help us out. We have to provide the water resources. So they did help us out in, in providing the vaccines for the employees. So hopefully we'll get some more.
Good.
So, thanks, thanks to the city of Port Isabel for that. Uh, and that's all I have for, for that COVID. And we're still following protocol until everybody gets vaccine and we feel safe on, on all sides. So we gotta keep moving forward, so. Trying to be safe is the, the one thing that we try to do here. And that, that's all. Any questions on the COVID? Then the next one that I have here is a beer reclamation is, uh, uh, one of the, the state, uh, agencies that, that is, uh, trying to usually help us out on, on grants and, and they call Water Smart funding for, for the wastewater side right now. There is one that came up today. They send us information. You know what, Charles? Uh, we just received it today and, and, uh, we're looking at the, uh, trying to get some grant strength from, uh, the beer reclamation that, uh, we started the, the, the reuse at, uh, Port Isabel Wastewater Treatment. We'd like to follow through and, and keep moving forward with assistance. And you all have a copy of it. It just came in today.
Yeah, we just had a handout. They did post the, the grants notice or funding opportunity announcement, uh, this afternoon. So I printed out the synopsis, um, for, for your review. And so it is a seventy-five, twenty-five, uh, cooperative agreement grant that's being advertised right now with applications due April twenty-third. And so, uh, you know, the ceiling for the grant portion is, uh, twenty million and the workforce is zero. So that, 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 you know, that puts us in that range, uh, for the remaining work that we need at Port Isabel Sewer Plant, actually get the advanced water treatment facility and have it discharged back to the reservoir. And so that, that's the portion of work that still needs to get done. And, uh, you know, the, the federal funding amount is up to twenty-five percent of the total cost of planning, design and or construction that has either already been completed or will be conducted before September thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-three, up to a maximum of twenty million for project. And so, uh, you know, we have our, the following page on here was the completion letter from our feasibility report. It was issued January eighth, uh, twenty sixteen. And so that's really what makes us eligible for this grant opportunity by completing that feasibility study. And, and, and so really the, the other part, the last page on here in the, in the handout is the survey that Black and Beach Estates has complete, um, for the water management strategies. And this was included as a water management strategy in the twenty twenty-one update that came out in November for the state water plan. And, um, their estimate for remaining work is about four million dollars, um, to, to get this advanced water treatment. Based on the estimate that we've done, I mean, for the work completed with a Port Isabel wastewater plant modifications, outfall extension. We've already spent ten point seven million on this project. And so the remain, remaining work to finish this out, I had an estimate, I filled out this survey earlier, uh, last year, about seventeen and a half million to, to get us back to the reservoir, receiving the clean water. And so, you know, the, the component of that completed work that can be counted as a, as, you know, a, a local portion of the cooperative grant remains to be seen. But we have to make those determinations during the study.
It's a great deal. This is fabulous.
We'd like to move forward and, and, uh, at least, uh, and, um, we can.
Yes.
And, uh, one of the things that we do need is a workshop to present to all the board that information and, uh, before the deadline, which is April twenty-third.
Right.
Deadline for sending out the application and, and information that we could get off. So.
How much time you need for the workshop?
So we're thinking a Saturday hour.
Whenever y'all think of the field, or do you?
Before the regular scheduled meeting? How much presentation time are you thinking either? What, what are you? Why don't we just do an hour before, uh, at this upcoming meeting, but the meeting at the end of, uh, the fourteenth meeting?
It has to be way before, yes.
Well, I mean, we're making decisions without two board members, so that's kind of the.
Yeah, because there'll have to be a resolution to apply for the application.
Right. So four thirty and fourteen. Yes, yes.
Be sure you've written a contact dealer too, so they know ahead of time.
If not, we'll have to call special meeting or something.
And then on another note, uh, we write that one down for fourteen. And, uh, I, I think we well, this, this was, uh, professional services committee. We don't, we don't need that one yet. But anyhow, we'll, uh, make phone calls with Jason and I think they've ordered a part of the committee. But anyhow, that's, uh, moving forward on that one.
I mean, I think a double meeting is my, yes.
So that's all I have. Any other questions then? Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Great progress. Item nine, Charles, this is a good, there's a report.
Yes, for the, the status of the lift station rehabilitation, we're in the process of getting easements. We've obtained the easement, um, at the church parking lot to decommission Isabel's lift station. And I've already approached that Shaw Harbor subdivision. They're pretty reasonable. It's a matter of getting the documentation and we should be able to get the easement acquired. For the new force main, we're getting four hundred one hundred. And then our, our next one is to reach out to ETS and that should, and then lift station fifteen is at the community center in Port Isabel. And City Commission has already approved that easement. So it's a matter of, you know, getting the, the deed, uh, signed and filed in court house. So our easements are in pretty good shape for, for the, the park that needs a lot of bid. So we're looking at a, you know, bidding within what, sixty days or so? And, uh, and also, uh, you know, the, the portion of that is that, that two million dollars being over budget, uh, which is, you know, the, the revenue note that's, that's kind of an actual item for us to do an open market request through the T C Q review to, um, to get that fully funded. And, and one of the other options that came up or discussions was lift station ten. That's the, that's the, the one here on, um, we speak in Bay. It's the lift station on Highway one hundred and kind of between Los Foyas and where that yellow house is at. And so, uh, you know, with that, that being a manifold to that, uh, portion being, or from Laguna Heights, just like all the HEB and Stripes, you know, it's fighting the Laguna Heights, uh, pump station, just like private, uh, si- sites that we're gonna decommission through the sewer project. And so one of the options, we were thinking, make that one much easier. It came up during our hundred percent workshop, the, the session this past couple of weeks, was to run a force main, Michigan Avenue. And then we can keep that lift station simple, have a nice discharge where it's not fighting against pressure from Laguna Heights. And so our approach was to actually run a, a four inch force main with an in-house crew and just take care of it, you know, without making it a larger construction contract. So, so I, I think that's our plan to proceed with lift station ten, is it's gonna get removed from the, from the contract through water development board and just get finished out in house. And so that's, you know, the main updates we got on the list.
Good.
Right? So I guess moving on to the next one is Long Island Village. Uh, we did submit their project information forms, just like we did for our water plant and, and elevated storage tank. So, and, and their, uh, their, uh, project information forms were accepted. So, so they're gonna be ranked and the view for the intended use plan that'll be issued in June. So that, that's basically the, the main update we have for Long Island Village. And then the last one is just request for qualifications on the water system improvements. We already have a draft, uh, request for professional services, uh, ready to go um, for the water plant in Port Isabel and the six hundred thousand gallon elevated storage tank. And, uh, really the, the way the dates are filled in here, if we start advertising April eleventh, um, you know, negotiate or recommend award in May, start negotiating the contract, uh, but like that, we can already, you know, just get ahead of the curve. Be covering that on a reimbursable basis. So when we do close next fiscal year, you know, we'd already be that much farther along in designing the design. So that, that's, that's really the, the last item here for the engineering. Okay, thank you, Charles.
Good report. Let's move along to item ten. Discuss and approve a resolution authorizing the district staff and professional advisors to submit an application to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality in, uh, connection with issuing waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds to finance district improvements. Resolution one eight three dash zero three dash two zero two one.
Yes, yeah, this is the resolution to allow us to submit the bond application report for the lift station, uh, being over budget.
Motion for approval by Mr. Donahue, second by Mr. Water. All those are in favor, none are opposed. Motion carries. Excellent. Thank you. Let's move along to eleven. Discuss and approve a resolution authorizing the district staff and professional advisors to submit an application to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality in Connection with Issuing Unlimited Tax Bonds to Finance District Improvements, Resolution one eight four dash zero three twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, and this is gonna be the application for Laguna Boulevard and, uh, the replacement of the clarifiers at water plant one.
Motion for approval by Mr. Water, second by Mr. Donahue. All those are in favor, none are opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item twelve, consider review expenditures from March first, twenty twenty-one through March fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, just, uh, acknowledgement by all parties. By Mr. Donahue, knowledge by Mr. Water, all, including myself, have acknowledged. Item thirteen, take this to adjournment at six seventeen, I'm sorry, six seventeen P M.